Meeting to order, Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Meeting notice was posted on Friday, September 1st at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Eric, for volunteering. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is there anybody signed up for public comments on anything?
We do not have anybody signed up, but we do have a couple people that are interested in speaking.
Come on up to the podium. First, last name and address and the subject matter you would like to speak on.
My name is Mike Bentheimer, N1030, Vinny Haha Road, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I'm not a City of Milton resident. I'd just like to speak on behalf of interest in the ATV, UTV use in the City of Milton. I've heard a lot of the same thing we went through in the town of Kaskanon just over a year ago, about all the people who's gonna get influx of ATV and UTVs. There really isn't. You can ride around anywhere in the town of Kaskanon and you might see one or two here and there, but there is no mass takeover, so to speak. There are noise limits. There are no noise limits on Harleys or other vehicles. So the DNR does impose noise limits. I believe even on ATVs, you cannot modify the exhaust legally. We were just up in Cambria, which is probably about the size of Milton. A week ago Saturday, they had a large ride, a benefit ride, and they've got Didion and Seneca Foods up there with very large plants, a lot of truck traffic, and there were no issues at all. And also, Jefferson's been open for about a year and a half. So I guess I'm just here in support of it and would appreciate it if everyone would win favorite eventually. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And I believe that's gonna be on our second meeting in September agenda item as of right now. Okay, so we'll go on to mayoral proclamations. The first one is the International Underground Railroad Month, September 2023. Whereas the Underground Railroad was a secret network of routes and safe houses utilized by enslaved African Americans to escape to Canada among other destinations where they would not be subject to so-called fugitive slave laws during the lead-up to the Civil War. And whereas between 1842 and 1861, more than 100 formerly enslaved individuals, including Carolyn Quarles, the first freedom seeker to travel through Wisconsin, and Joshua Glover, whose liberation from a Milwaukee jail cemented our reputation as a staunch abolitionist state, were aided on their journey to freedom by Wisconsin residents. And whereas while accounts of Underground Railroad experiences are scarce, as both those who traveled it and those who aided them had to be discreet about their activities, documentation relating to several courageous journeys through Wisconsin have since been uncovered. And whereas our state is committed to the preservation of our Underground Railroad history, and in fact, Wisconsin is home to the only authenticated underground tunnel used by freedom seekers in North America located at the Milton House Museum in Milton. And whereas we recognize the efforts of the many people in Wisconsin and throughout the world who have dedicated their lives to keeping the memory of the Underground Railroad alive through the National Park Service's National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom and UNESCO Sites of Memory Designations. And whereas this occasion provides an opportunity for all Wisconsinites and all Americans to acknowledge the contributions of the Underground Railroad to the eradication of slavery in the United States and to reflect on our collective past and how it informs the systems of oppression that persist in our culture and institutions. And whereas this month, the State of Wisconsin commends the courage, determination, and resilience of the thousands of enslaved individuals who risked their lives on the Underground Railroad, and we reaffirm our commitment to creating a more just and equitable state and nation that would make these freedom seekers proud. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as International Underground Railroad Month. And another very important and much awaited proclamation. It may seem like it's a little early, but you know, we have to get our newsletter out with all the important dates. So tonight, we will be proclaiming the Halloween trick-or-treat hours in the City of Milton. So please take note. Whereas the City of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages participation in the gaiety of this holiday by both young and old. And whereas miniature ghosts, goblins, witches, and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st. And whereas they ring doorbells of their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies. And whereas the safety of these small creatures is assured by an accompanying adult and is a source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and the older people whom they visit and entertain. Whereas I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, Halloween in the City of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Tuesday, October 31st, 2023 shall be known as Halloween Trick-or-Treat Day, and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. So there you have it. Start buying your candy now. All right, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved, second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Open Doors Foundation application for special event permit. So we're gonna move to another holiday quick here. Lighted Christmas Tree Parade. So if there's anybody here that wants to speak on it, otherwise we'll just move on for information from staff.
I think she's requested. I have a little information to start with. So Rhonda Mitchell, who is here and Open Doors Foundation has requested a special event permit for the Lighted Christmas Parade, and this is going to be held on December 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. They will have the police involved as far as from the start of it and then finishing at the back of the parade. The reason that it's coming to council at this point is because it is a new event. It's going to be using city labor, especially the police department, also the barricade, setting up and taking down the barricades. And so the city staff has requested a direction for approval of this from the council.
Rhonda, did you wanna inform us a little more?
Well, I have eight grandchildren that, you know, they live in this community, and I just think it's a great idea to add it to the Mary Milton Weekend. It's just something that our family, we go to other communities, Janesville, Clinton, Whitewater, to see the parades, Christmas parades there, and I just thought it'd be great to have one here so we don't have to leave our community. And I just think there's the possibility of it just adding more to the Mary Milton Weekend that we already have with kicking off Christmas and building community here, so.
And then will people like enter floats into the parade or how does that process work?
Yeah, I'm working with Derek Henze, and he says there will be no cost. It's just we're gonna figure out a way, if it's approved, to have people sign up to enter floats, tractors, you know, light them up with Christmas lights. And so hopefully we'll get enough to make it worthwhile. It'll be on High Street, starting at Schilberg, going to, ending at Gathering Place. So it's a little under a mile, and the Milton School District said it was okay. They'd make sure it was plowed to stage at Schilberg. The Gathering Place said it sounded great to end there. So I think working with Chief, and I think we've got most of the bases covered with barricades and things like that.
Any questions or comments from the council? I'm sure if Linda Clark was here, she'd have questions, but she's not feeling well, so. I don't have her questions. Any comments, Chief?
Yeah, just FYI, I won't be participating. I'll be watching, but y'all knew that already.
But Julie is actually participating.
What?
So you are, too, then?
So I didn't hear that yet, okay. Not surprised, though. But I'll be working with the next chief when he arrives, and kind of this will be his first event planning thing to work on. So I'm kind of holding off on doing a lot of the details until he's here and can participate with me in the planning of the event. But there are no concerns from us. SWEPT is already on board to help us at certain intersections. Obviously, the police department can't cover every intersection, so we depend on our volunteers in the community to help with that. They've already said that they are interested in being there, and no concerns on our side at this point.
No, I think it sounds exciting and appreciate your work in setting that up. Great.
Thanks.
Is there a motion? Look at all these happy little Christmas people.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve the special event, right? Special event permit for the Lighted Christmas Parade. All those in favor say aye. Is there anyone opposed? We have another parade in the morning!
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, go ahead if you'd like to speak.
I really, I have to tell who I am first on.
First and last name and address.
Richard Plowett, 125 Lucas Lane. I really had no plans to talk about a parade tonight. However, it does come close to my heart because as part of the Sundown Snowmobile Group, we have an entry every year for the Edgerton Holiday Parade, which has just been fabulous the last five, six years. Chris Lund, the mayor, I'm good friends with him. The holiday parade that Edgerton has now, now draws more people than the Tobacco Day Parade. Oh, I can't say tobacco anymore. The Edgerton Heritage Days Parade. So yeah, it's a big deal, and if Milton does have one, I would probably even, we would probably put an entry, you know, in the Milton Parade. You know, we decorate the groomer all up and everything else. So then we pull a trailer with, you know, snowmobiles on it, and then kids throwing out candy and all that good stuff. But yeah, if somebody would've told me last Tuesday I'd be talking about a Christmas parade tonight, I would've taken that bet at the drop of a hat. But nonetheless, yeah, it's a great event. I would encourage to contact Chris Lund, the mayor of Edgerton, because it's a really big deal, and it draws a bigger crowd than our Tobacco Day Parade. So just wanted to throw that out there. Next time, I'll talk about the ATV thing again, though.
Well, we appreciate any audience participation. We really enjoy that, and we welcome it. So you feel free to talk as much as you want tonight.
No, Mayor, I think I'm done, but like I said, it's a great time. And there's just something about a lighted holiday parade at night that just warms the cockles of your heart. So, all right, that's all I got.
And I can inform everyone that Edgerton's parade is not the same night as Milton's parade. So you can do both parades, you can have entries in both parades, so. Okay, all right. So moving on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion and possible action regarding a municipal court forfeiture deposit request for municipal ordinance section 70-182.
So one of the lessons learned from our summer construction is trucks end up in places where they don't belong, and we discovered that we did not have a set bond amount for that particular violation of our ordinance. So worked with the judge to bring that to you tonight, just the standard process of her setting the bond amount and then getting council approval so that we can add that to our system.
Questions or comments? Or a motion?
I would move approval of the forfeiture ordinance 70-182, first reading. Waive the second and third in a doubt.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Just to be clear, this is actually not an ordinance. This is just, the ordinance is already here. It's the forfeiture for the ordinance is what we're setting.
So do we have to like amend everything? I mean, they went so quick, we could hardly keep up.
Yeah, I think just to clarify for the record, if you want to repeat, that there'd be a, it sounds like a motion to approve the recommended forfeiture for ordinance section 70 hyphen 182.
I would move that we accept the forfeiture amounts for ordinance 70-182.
I'll keep the second on that.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, good job, you guys. Discussion and possible action regarding Pierce Farm Lees.
In 2013, the city entered into a pre-annexation agreement with Pierce Farms. As part of that agreement, Pierce Farms was permitted to lease the land at Crossridge Park for $1 through year 2025. Pierce Farms has indicated they are no longer interested in leasing that land, so staff is requesting direction from council on how to proceed with that. We provided a couple options in the memo. We can rent it to a different individual at fair market price. We also provided the Crossridge Park plan that was developed several years back as kind of a memory jogger of what the long-term plan for that area looks like. We've got an estimate of around $1,250 in revenue annually. If we were to continue the lease, we could bid out the leases. That's something that has been discussed for some time for all of our farmland leases. So really just looking for a discussion and any recommendation from council on how you'd like to proceed with that.
Questions, comments?
I take it that we don't have a donor that would help us implement the Crossridge Plan Park at this point?
We don't at this point, but the Chair of Parks and Recreation, Ryan Peterson, has said he would reach out to a couple different restoration companies to see if they would be interested, but we don't have a donor at this point.
So we could lease it out on a yearly basis until we decide if there's something better.
Yes, that's correct.
So I guess I like the idea of leasing it out or asking for the community to have farmers bid on it, and we take the best offering for a lease for a year. Because even if we found someone today that wanted to develop that area, it's gonna take at least a year before it's gonna happen.
Is that a motion?
Just discussing, but I'd like to make a motion that we reach out in the community and open up, if we want to open up for bidding, to lease that sector of farmland for a year.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments?
Okay, go ahead. I kinda like that idea, too, because it also gives us more time to maybe come up with a more concrete plan if we want to turn all that into a park, so we could lease it for a year, and then we can reevaluate again next year if we wanted to. But that gives us time to, instead of jumping on it right now, almost last minute, let's just give ourselves a more time.
And I like the idea of trying to, in the interim, find someone that may be willing to donate or.
Fund?
Fund, yes. Underwrite, whatever terminology we want to use, but before we put it out for selling it.
Just curious, could we put the mayoral, take from those whoever bid, takes the bid, and put that towards parks? And maybe I can go for equipment that could be used for this park or something like that when it becomes a park?
I would say probably yes, that is considered a park. So that would be my thought for that piece of ground, that any revenue would go to the Parks Fund.
Mark, did you have a comment? The other Mark?
Well, I assume you'd probably follow whatever policy you have right now for where you allocate funds from the leasing of land that's owned by the city. I don't recall what that is.
Where does that dollar go?
Most of them. So we do receive the dollar, but I don't know exactly where that dollar goes, but I know for all of our other farmland leases, it goes to, if it was in TIF, then it goes back to the TIF. So I'm looking at it, Kelsey, I don't know if we know exactly where that dollar went.
Jenny's correct, so it goes right into the TIF. But if y'all would like it to go to parks instead of TIF, I think you can just make a.
Is it in a TIF where it's mandatory that it goes back to the TIF?
I don't think it's mandatory that it goes to the TIF. It's just within TIF boundaries, so.
Okay.
The lease payments have been going to TIF.
Just thought it might help, you know, offset maybe equipment that might have to go in that park at a later date. We could at least just accrue some money that way, so.
Did you wanna amend the motion to include that? Because I was just reading Mark's mind, and he was gonna push his button and ask for that anyways.
I'd like to amend the motion to include that, yes.
I'll second the amendment.
Could you just do the whole motion then, how you want it? For Jenny's sake and my mind.
The whole motion with the amendment added would be that we would go ahead and send it out to open bid for fair market price, and that the money that would come in from that would then go into the Parks Recreation Fund for, in theory, equipment for a future park, the park expansion.
For that park? As labeled on the map. And you're okay with that, second? But he changed.
I had an amendment, she wanted me to consolidate all of that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, there we go. Now we're gonna go on to Putman Parkway bid.
This is for construction of the cul-de-sac on the west end of Putman Parkway and adding asphalt surface on the eastern segment of Putman Parkway. The project's bid July 18th and July 25th. The original project budget discussed in February 22nd only included the construction of the cul-de-sac. Adding the additional pavement surface did increase the project bid over the budgeted amount. However, with the added scope of work, there is likely to be some cost savings versus bidding that was two separate projects, and we're able to use TIF funding to cover the $12,000 access. So staff is recommending the award of the Putman Parkway Cul-de-sac Project to Rock Road Companies.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion to award the Putman Parkway Cul-de-sac Project to Rock Road Companies, Inc., if you want, it's specified. Second?
All those in favor say aye. Want to oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2023-16, authorizing signatory municipality to exceed the levy limit for the Edgerton Fire Protection District. You're gonna go, Kelsey? All right, great.
So this is just the annual resolution that comes up for us to be able to authorize us to exceed our levy limit if needed for the Edgerton Fire Protection District. Each member of the district has to sign one each year in order for anyone to be able to take the levy limit, to be able to exceed our levy limit, so.
So we can put that on our worksheet, and that's where the CPI plus two comes in?
Yes, it's the CPI plus two.
All right, any questions or comments? Motion?
Make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-16.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2023-17, accepting dedication of improvements.
As you recall, Park Place Investments performed a residential development on the northeast end of Milton. That project is to a point where they would like to request the city accept the improvements. Action Women has completed a walkthrough of the project and established that the project has been constructed as required in the developer's agreement, so this resolution effectuates that acceptance or dedication of those improvements.
Questions, comments? Or a motion?
I would move approval of Resolution 2023-17, accepting dedication of improvements.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2023-18, authorizing reduction of a letter of credit for improvement.
So this resolution goes hand in hand with the previous resolution. It allows for the letter of credit to be reduced. The letter of credit is provided for outstanding work to be completed in the event that the developer defaults on parts of their development agreement. Now that the work is completed and accepted, there's no longer a need for the full letter of credit amount. Therefore, the amount could be reduced to a lower amount as specified in the resolution. Staff would recommend approval of this resolution as well.
Questions, comments, motion?
I would move approval of Resolution 2023-18, authorizing reduction of the letter of credit for improvements.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. General items, committee reports. Who wants to go first? I know there were meetings last week, so you can't say there weren't meetings. Eric, there you go!
Couple items here, yeah. So Parks, Parks and Rec, great meeting. Mark kept us on schedule, moved us ahead, actually, very prompt. Couple people representing the Disc Golf Group came with some great ideas for new signs that we're gonna have made with a little scannable barcode that'll bring up an online sort of interactive map, and spoke very positively about having these in this area and the different groups that it will draw. So very excited about that. We had started signs in the past, and now this gets us back on track to look to see costs so we can seek funding. We're back to having Dog Day at the Goodrich Square Splashpad, September 24th. Bring your dogs. Maybe we'll possibly have food trucks in the future, but for now, we're gonna start small, see who all comes. It's a great way to use the Splashpad at the end of the season. I think that was pretty much it. What's that I missed, Jenny? I know.
Parks and Rec started having the conversation about the Monarch Way Stations. So Jennifer Dutcher had requested that a way station be put in the Tails and Trails Dog Park, and so the Parks and Recreation started discussing that. And so the staff will be providing information for costs to do that. And then the city is officially Monarch City, USA. So then we will start to find options for funding to put up additional signs within the city.
And do you have another committee to report on?
I think that was all.
That was it? I thought you said there's a couple, but it was a couple things.
Couple items.
Items, okay, gotcha. Anything else? Teresa, did you go to any fire stuff?
During the past week?
Yeah, since our last meeting?
No.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Bill?
Well, the planning session for the fire stations took place. Took place, uh, took place at the Milton Town Hall.
Oh.
And, um, you know, we reviewed with the architect. I was there for a portion. They broke it into four pieces. Milton East, Milton West, Newville, and then the renovations to the Edgerton Station. I was there for the Milton East, Milton West portion. And actually was quite impressed by the architect that they're working with. She seems to be extremely knowledgeable of fire stations. And was able to, I think, deal with the questions that the firefighters brought up. There were several there and they brought some questions. I think by the end of the day, um, the, the plans were improved from where they started. Although I think without a great deal of additional costs, so. Process is going very well as far as I'm concerned.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was, I didn't think it was last week. Seems so long ago.
Any other committee reports? Okay, so let's go with staff reports. And Chief, do you have any updates?
Does Mark have any updates? Is it done? Okay, so still, um, the barricades are still in place. Please don't drive on our closed roads. That's really the only update I have. Um, it's, honestly, it's been a great first week-ish of school. Crossing guards are out there doing their very best work, keeping our kids safe. I'm very proud of them and grateful for the work that they do. One of the complaints that we've been having lately is people parking in front of mailboxes when stopping and parking and waiting to pick up their kids. That's creating some issues with the homeowners, so that's something that we're going to be working on, is doing some education on that and try to convince people that you can, you can park and wait for your child, but please don't block somebody else's mailbox and prevent their mail from appearing. So something that we'll be working on in the next few weeks.
Had one concern brought to, to me, and I think I explained it correctly, but that no crossing at along Madison Avenue where the island is around, uh, when fifty-nine turns right and M goes straight. Is that correct? That because of the safety issues with having that island there?
I honestly don't know. There are other places to cross that do have crosswalks. I don't know, Mark, if you want to jump in?
So we're adding, um, those R R F Ps are called, those flashing beacons that go at the crosswalks. You see them in some areas. Riding them up near Division Street on Madison and I think it's Berdick on Clear Lake with crosswalks there, just to try to get the pedestrian traffic away from that intersection because it's that intersection's, you know, right turn, no stop, so there's just, it's a, it's a safety concern.
Well, their complaint was they didn't want to walk down there and walk back. So I'll send them to you.
Well, it, it, maybe I shouldn't.
Oh, you only got a few months, just let it rip.
We experienced the same thing in the parking world, where people don't want to be inconvenienced, even though it is safer with the systems that we have set up. And I'm empathetic to that. It is an extra block to walk. It is safer to walk that block and cross it a crosswalk that's now going to have flashing yellow lights besides than trying to go across a free-flowing lane of traffic and hoping that the person sees you before they make their right turn. I think it was a great compromise and I'm glad we're doing it and it's worth the walk.
Yeah. People need to be reminded there was a child killed in Jamesville last year.
Ashley?
Um, we had a busy and successful summer at the library. We're slowing down a tad bit now. We're reaching out to teachers, see how we can help them throughout the school year. I'll start working again with MECA's. Um, we're just doing what we do.
Great, thank you. Mark? Any updates on, I don't know, paving, other places?
Uh, some of the concrete patching should be done within the next week, hopefully on Madison Avenue. And then there's other miscellaneous areas around town they'll be wrapping up to later this fall. Seal coating took place last week. Just a lot of the routine stuff. And then hopefully the big project will be wrapped up this week, so.
Kelsey? In case you didn't know, because Kelsey's not going to tell you, there's a little celebration marking her birth today.
I don't have the updates today.
Um, let's see, Dwayne?
Well, I think I'm getting better in the saddle at the place here, getting, you know, certain areas. What I had with last week and two weeks ago, I did a tour at TIF eleven because I needed to know a little more how it's laid out and Mark helping with that. I also have the developer, looking at a developer agreement. It's, uh, it looks like a preliminary P U D. So that's in the making. I don't know when we'll get it moving forward, but it's discussions. I did attend the Park Recreation Committee, which got a lot of information. After the meeting, I got a chance to meet with the park chair. Actually went over a lot of the requirements in the park, uh, I want to say it right, recreational plan. That's the whole, the whole plan is in the park, so we, you kind of pointed me out to certain things that are in the, in the recreational plan, specifically the one that you talked about tonight. The only thing I got educated with the fire chief and the staff, I mean, and staffing and the next steps at the fire department, port of stations, et cetera. So I got a little more knowledge of that. I did do a Zoom meeting with Brian, our financial consultant, which helped me a lot on our city tips, which has some questions I had. And it was very helpful. Also, luckily, I've had a call with Al and formation of the TIF as it pays you go, so he helped me a little bit too. Which was good, it's kind of really, with all the three weeks I've been working here, this is now jelling together, to put things together. And of course, we had a site plan that was approved tonight at the Planning and Design Commission.
Thank you very much. Jenny? I don't have a lot, but we're, I'm already starting to work towards the two thousand twenty-four elections. We have, if anyone is interested in being an election official, we are starting that list that will be approved in December. Um, and then we're also looking for improvements that we'll be doing in our policies, procedures, and literally just our equipment. So I'm excited about that and it's early, but we're trying to get that started, so we're ready for next year.
And I attended the, um, the Chief Executive Officers Conference and I was on a panel. Um, and we talked about the University City Project. I learned lots of information throughout the conference and I think we sent out a reminder to everybody about the October conference. I'll also be speaking at the University of Madison this Friday to talk about the University City Project with some other mayors that are partnering, um, with the University City Alliance. And I think that is it for right now. Are we all ready for team building? Yes, okay. So it's a fill in the blank. The last big weekend of summer has passed and fill in the blank. Dwayne's going to go first. Need to note, like, this creates brain cells? Stress, what are you saying? The last big summer weekend has passed and.
Point of clarification, which is, you're saying this last weekend has passed?
Yeah.
And so it's moving forward from here?
Yeah.
Because I'll go then.
Okay.
Get ready for pumpkin spice.
Nice. Can be going forward or backwards. It doesn't really, it doesn't really matter.
Um, it's time for football.
Nice. Okay, just don't rub it in. Like, she just got over this and now she's going to start grieving again.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm sad. I really, really, really love summer and I'm, I'm sad. I'm excited for maybe this weather's going to continue for a little longer.
And Mark's counting the days till the first thirties fly.
And I'm excited for sweaters and cool crisp mornings.
Might get one tomorrow.
Looking forward to the leaves turning.
We're excited to be back in our routine and schedule of the school year and the fall.
And I'm looking forward to spending some time with my new grandson.
Oh, and what's his name?
Landon.
I will say, and I'm enjoying watching Badger football games instead of working at them. Because I crossed that off my list this year.
All right, I'll go. And I am looking forward to eventually turning my air conditioning off for a long, long period of time.
And there's no more holidays until Thanksgiving.
That's not true. Halloween.
You don't work on Halloween.
I'm ready for a frost to kill the bugs.
Yeah, me too. Did everybody go? We got everybody?
Yep.
Do you want to go? Do you want to give us your first and last name? Yes, so everybody welcome her. Okay, all right, so it's back to Eric again.
I would like to make a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one C Wisconsin stats considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding city administrator position.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is that unanimous? No one has opposed? Okay, we'll move into closed session.